...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, in the Father, with the Son, and with the Holy Spirit.
First, I want to welcome the guests and the visitors, and I want to remind you about the public comments section. Public comments will only be taken during the public comments section of the agenda. You must sign up in advance on the list and must limit to three-minute conversation. Jefferson City Council may ask questions but shall not discuss items that are not on the agenda. On a subject that is not on the agenda, a person may request to add an item to the future city council agenda by contacting the city hall. The deadline for the request to be placed on the agenda for consideration must be received with all corresponding documents by 5:00 p.m. the Wednesday before the regularly scheduled meeting. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be cause for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. And going down the list of those who signed up to speak, the first one would be Mr. Sammy Testa.
Thank you all for allowing me to come up here before and talk today about something that came about on the agenda. And so, hello, as you can see, my name is Sammy Testa, resident of Jefferson, registered voter, taxpayer. And so, the timing on one of the agenda items with the Lions Club park being renamed, that I might offend someone personally, that from talking personally, but from the standpoint of the Lions Club, I don't want to offend anyone, but for it to be put on the agenda at this time, when the Lions Club is busy with the park doing the enchanted forest and everything, it was kind of, from my standpoint, personally thinking that it was kind of where it was going to be slipped by the Lions Club. Don't have time, didn't know about it. I found out about it yesterday afternoon. And so, a few of us are here to talk about what's going on with renaming it Alley's Grand Square, Square, excuse me. But, you know, with the Lions Park, for generations, and I say generations, several generations of kids have came up knowing it as Lions Park and playing there. Of course, we've had the circus there for years. We do the enchanted forests. There's been other events that we've had there also that benefit all of them. Now, we're talking about renaming it. What's involved in that? What does it benefit the city to rename it? Okay? What does it benefit the city? The city's going to have to take down the park sign, get another one, do marketing, do Google Maps as Secretary of, you know, the city administration, have to do a lot of work like that. So, there'll be a lot of behind-the-scenes hidden costs that the city will, you know? There's too many things broken in the city to waste your time on something like that as far as renaming the park. Now, I've got a couple of other questions that, you know, why wasn't the Lions Club notified by the council mayor pro tem that put it on the agenda? Were you trying to slip it by? That's a question I have personally, okay? Not from the Lions Club, but personally. And as I said earlier, what benefit will it be to the city? Is there some personal MO in doing this? That's just something that's in my mind personally. Now, one other thing, too, is that the Lions Club uses the park for things that benefit the city. It brings revenue to the Lions Club. For instance, we just had the circus in town, and, you know, we get revenue for that, we get revenue from the enchanted forests and some other things that we do that helps us bring in revenue. And Lord knows, it's tough to get it these days with the way things are, but it brings in revenue that we give it all back to the community. And when I say give it all back to the community, you know, we do things like scholarships, we do things like meat supplies, we do glasses for needy children. We have a machine that tests the eyes for these young children to find out if they have some type of disease early, identifying that. We do whatever we make, we put back in the community, and that's something that...
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
All right. Just like I said, to rename Lions Park would be a terrible mistake, and as far as the Alley family, over what we pay as taxpayers and do it for the community, I'd like to know what they pay these days.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Kelsey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I'm John Kelsey. I'm a third-generation citizen of Marion County and was born and raised and currently reside at 402 West Austin Street here in Jefferson. I'm here to briefly bring you a few facts regarding the history and naming of the city park as currently known by many as is Lions Park. My research has found numerous references to the official name of our city park. The earliest name I found was Alley's Grand Square, Grand Public Square, in an 1848 property dispute between Alley and one Barry H. Durham. Several other references are also found in many later 19th-century city alderman meeting minutes. Deed records show that the Alley, that Daniel Alley beaded the property at the park's location to the city of Jefferson in the mid-1800s. I think it was about 1854. The property remained under city ownership until it was beaded to the Marion County school system about 1900 and was, and remained property of the school system until it was beaded back to the city in 1970 after the elementary school located there was destroyed by fire. I found no reference to change the original name in any of those transactions. The Lions Club assumed responsibility for maintaining this park property. Sometimes after it went back to the city ownership, the Lions Club diligently mowed the grass, constructed and maintained public restroom on the south side and various, made various minor improvements to the park, and they've been very diligent with that over the years. Apparently, however, the agreement between the Lions Club and the city was done on a handshake. I found, again, I found no official reference to the change of the original official name during the brief period of the Lions Club maintenance of the park. With reference to tonight's agenda, I state the following. In light of the above information, in my opinion, the council should consider removing the word "renaming" and replace it with officially recognizing the official name. And on a related note, the Texas Historical Commission has approved and is preparing a historical marker for Alley's Grand Square. That marker will be placed in front of where the 1936 WPA-funded high school building once stood facing Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelsey. Next up is Francine and Don Rainey.
Could Horace, Peggy, and Chief join me, please? So, I'm on public comments. We are, as a group, to talk about the Diamond and the Rough weekend that we've just had. And Don and I promoted this event. This is our second annual. It is a fundraiser for Jefferson Adopt a Cop. Don and I will donate $5,500 from our registration fees as compared to $4,000 donated last year. In addition, Peggy, our biggest cheerleader, raised $775 from the people attending the meet-and-greet party, and we had additional donations that totaled $6,600. So, I have $6,600 to go to our treasury, Ms. Peggy. We had a great weekend. We had about 300 people that came in riding their Dill Sport Adventure and dirt bikes. In order to draw people to downtown, Don and I give a cash prize for shop until we drop. And the people who spend the most money turn those seats in, and then we give them cash. So, the winner of the contest was Valerie Mosley, and she spent $565. And the second place was Heather Brazil, and she spent $501. I'm sure that everybody around town saw all the bikes and enjoying the restaurants, shops, and museums. As a total, over the term of the five years that Adopt a Cop has been in place, we've distributed $17,000 as reimbursement to all of our LOAs in Marion County. The second year, our riders were up. Dill Sport, we had 126 compared to 809 last year. Many of the riders stayed in the B and Bs, downtown hotels, and motels on 59. We had a great meet-and-greet party. We had 200 people at the meet-and-greet on Friday night, and a friend of ours from Italy, Marco Luci, made over 100 homemade, real-baked pizzas for our crew, for those 200 people. So, all in all, it was a very, very successful event. God brought us perfect weather and perfect riding. Everyone had fun, and none got hurt.
Next up is Skip Torrens.
Good evening, councilmen, mayor, guests. I'm Skip Torrens. I'm representing the Jefferson Lions Club. Many of you have heard of the Jefferson Lions Club, and I'm here to tell you a little bit of the history of the Jefferson Lions Club. I can speak to what Mr. Kelsey had, and I have a little bit more than what he had. So, the Lions Club was established in Jefferson, chartered in 1947. Somewhere about 50-something years ago, the city of Jefferson came to the Lions Club and said, "Hey, could you guys maybe take care of the park and do something?" The man's name that did that was Sam Road. Sam was a lion, and he was also an official of the city of Jefferson. And we did. We took it over. At that time, there was almost no backstop. The Lions Club went up, fixed the backstop. There were no bases on the diamond. We put bases down. There was, the bathrooms and the showers were still there. The Lions Club maintained the showers, maintained the bathrooms, took care of them, mowed, we needed, picked up trash. We did everything that anybody would have done that took care of a piece of property. It got to be such a big job that we had to give it back to the city. Not long after that, the historic Jefferson Foundation came to us and said, "Hey, we're going to put up a forest up there with Christmas trees. Can you guys go up and help us with that?" And we did. And that was over 35 years ago, and we're still doing it, and we just got through with it today. So, the Lions Club park is decorated with 100 trees. The writing ceremony will be Saturday after Thanksgiving. There'll be over 1,000-something people here. There will be more than 1,000 people that come up nearly every night while candlelight is going on, and they're going to go through that park and look at those trees and think it's like a Norman Wolfwell thing. So, we start a circus. The circus came to us and said, "Hey, can y'all do a circus?" Well, yes, we can. So, we put a circus in. We did that over 20-something years ago. Now, what are we doing today? Well, we don't have the membership that we had. Nobody does. But I will tell you that we went up and with the help of Sammy Testa and some of the rest of us, we killed 61 fire ant beds. And some of them fire ant beds is over there where the children play and the swing sets and everything. So, we did that at no time, ever, in the history of Jefferson Lions Club, as we ever gone back to the city and said, "Hey, we need a little money. We need a little help. Y'all need to come out here and help us." We've done it with our own money. We've done it with our own sweat equity, and we think we deserve and have earned the right for that park to remain Lions Club Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Spearman.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Hey, everybody looks so good. Hello, everyone. To those of you that don't know me, I'm Mary Spearman. To those that know me, I get hugs. I'm here to speak on the park over by the community center. The park has no name, and it was suggested to name the park after Dr. Douglas. And I didn't know Dr. Douglas personally. I am from Marion County, but, I'm from Cass County, but I've lived in Marion County for 58 years. I was married to my husband Sammy for 57. Now, Dr. Douglas, after Doctor, in 1963, after years, Dr. Douglas hired Charles Hampton to design the building, the Douglas Memorial Hospital, across from Three Rivers Antique. The facility was dedicated in 1963 with Carpe Collins of Dallas, Texas. Dr. Douglas' life was an example of American youth, what can be accomplished if one has the will to reach. An estimated 700 people were on hand for the grand opening. The hospital had 25 beds, his office, examining room, and a large kitchen, also a public snack bar. The hospital employed 60 people, part-time workers, and accepted patients without regard to race, creed, or color. Willamette built a 65-bed nursing home next to the hospital and began the first nursing school in Marion County. The first graduating class of the nursing school was in 1964, Mary Edman. Everybody remember Mary? Cora Evans, Ethel Kelly, Ellie McDonald, and Mrs. Wilber Jenkins were among the many nurses that was employed there. I also attended church with the young lady, Barbara Lynn, who's passed away, but she worked for Dr. Douglas. With all that Dr. Douglas did for this community, I see nothing wrong with naming the park, Douglas Park, R.D. Park, and including his wife, because she worked along beside him to help do what, she was just helping me, to do what needed to be done. They received executive medical care. The hospital nursing home not only provided extra medical care, but provided needed employees for many people. One lady was supposed to be here with me tonight, and she's no call, no show, but getting the earbit work for Dr. Douglas, and she told me that he called everyone daughter. So, I see no reason why the park should not be named after Dr. Douglas. Someone put on Facebook...
Mary, thank you. Your time has expired. Next up is Hunter Manis. I hope I pronounced that right. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and ladies and gentlemen of the council for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to publicly address a letter that I delivered to city hall on November 13th and address any questions that you may have. My name is Hunter Lee Manis. I reside at 122 West Lafayette Street here in Jefferson. I'm glad regarding the recent resignation of Mayor Finstrom and respectfully request your consideration for appointment of the office of mayor of this great town. For those who may not know me, I'd like to briefly introduce myself and make sure the experience and the commitment I have to offer Jefferson. I'm 48 years old. I moved here to Jefferson on October 22nd to film a regionally aired cooking show. Some of you may know me by Chef Hunter Lee, but it is actually Hunter Lee Manis. I also write a weekly column for quite a few papers, one of them being The Jingle Cut. As the show concluded after a year, I found myself connected to the history and the people of this town and the peaceful way of life here. I chose to make Jefferson my permanent home in retirement, and I intend to spend the rest of my life here. I am retired from careers as a chef, a caterer, or a business owner, and I'm also a nationally published author. My involvement in the community has grown close knit, and Jefferson has truly become home. I'm originally from Mansfield, Louisiana, where I continue to own and manage my family's timber farm, a responsibility I've held since I was 26 years old. I grew up surrounded by public service and civic involvement. Both my grandparents served as parish tax assessors. My mother is chief deputy clerk to court. My family owned the local bank. We have longstanding ties in law as well as local and state politics. Educationally, I graduated from Central High School in Grand Canyon, Louisiana, and I later pursued studies in timber management, business management, and hospitality, as well as real estate sales and management and culinary arts programs. And also, not that it brings anything to the table here, but I'm also a licensed helicopter pilot. Over the years, I've successfully owned and operated multiple businesses, including liquor stores, nightclubs, a fully operational, almost 1,000-acre farm and cattle operation, real estate sales and rental companies, and three successful catering companies throughout Louisiana and Lafayette, Lake Charles, and New Orleans. What I firmly believe qualifies me for this position is eight years of experience working closely with tourism and community events, locally and throughout a state level, including collaborations with Lieutenant Governor of Louisiana Billy Nungesser, who also serves as the state's head of tourism. Notably, I served as founder and director of the Northwest Louisiana Gumbo Cookoff, overseeing its growth for more than four years. I was a four-year elected captain in the Northwest Louisiana Mowbray Association, managing and serving...
Your time has expired, sir. Thank you very much.
In closing, I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next is, looks like Ron, is that Fisher?
Yes, sir. Counselor.
I'm Ron Fisher. I have served the city in your cafeteria plan, servicing Colonial Life Insurance benefits since 1993, and each year, we present the cafeteria plan resolution for you to approve. This is done at no cost to the city. Colonial Life pays, it's $100 a year Colonial Life pays, and in return, we just ask that you let us talk to each employee and dot the i's across the t's on all the forms that need to be prepared, which really are the election forms showing that each employee has been offered the benefits through the city's major medical, health insurance, dental, and vision, and those benefits, if there are any deductions, come out before taxes. So, it's pre-tax. It saves the city approximately 7.65% payroll taxes, and that is just a savings the city takes advantage of. And then, in return, we offer the benefits through Colonial, and we have several employees taking advantage of that. Those policies, they can keep if they leave. Some of them have left the city, have retired for various reasons, and they had the opportunity to keep those at the same cost. You're doing something for the employees with these benefits that they normally wouldn't be able to get as easily, for example, life insurance. We don't have any health questions for employees, so if they've had some health challenges, we can go ahead and insure them if they're actively working, and they can take that with them, just as if they'd come to my office in Texcana to sit down and go over benefits. In addition to that, there are also wellness benefits that the employees take advantage of, like if they go get the ladies a mammogram, the men like cholesterol, or PSA, the cancer policy, and all our policies have wellness benefits that they can take advantage of. But tonight, we're asking you to adopt this again for another year at no cost to the city, and the resolution, I think, has already been prepared. So...
It's coming up in the consent agenda. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, looks like Smith, Maggie, maybe? Mark, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm right-handed, and as you see, my right hand is on the carousel.
I understand.
I understand what I was saying. But thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to start out by saying what Mary got up and said about Dr. R.D. Douglas, and that's what I'm here speaking on, naming the park after Dr. R.D. Douglas. The things that she had said, made a lot of great comments. She could have stayed up here and talked a little bit longer about him, because there's so much more that can be said about Dr. Douglas. I don't know if many of you know that he was one of the, he may have been the only black doctor, the only black doctor that I can remember practicing here in Marion County. I was born in 1960. I heard her say that he, the hospital was established in 1963. I didn't have the privilege of being born in that hospital. I was born at home, but if I had been born a couple of years later, I would have been born in that hospital. But he hired a lot of people, and black people that I know of, to work in that hospital. He opened the doors to everyone, and just a great doctor all around. I know that where his hospital was, I know there's an antique mall there, and I know that there's not any type of plaque or anything showing that's where that hospital was or anything talking about the accomplishments that he made for this county. But I am in all agreement that that park should be named R.D. Douglas Park, and perhaps his wife's name should be added to that also. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Peggy Walker.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor pro tem. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to briefly address some things about concerning our building permit. There have been questions and issues. So, first of all, as a brief review, I'd like to go over the timeline. April 2nd is the building permit was accepted by the city. On the 14th, a network of planning and zoning, a few questions were asked, and it was approved if the bill is approved by the adjacent property owner, Mr. Hughes. On the 15th, also, got an approval from Mr. Hughes and received a grant to the city council, and that even the city council approved the permit with a variance. That's important. The next is September 3rd, we began a carport construction. The week of September 22nd through 26th, we got a visit from Chief Perez, who verbally requested us to stop the carport construction, which we did. We complied. The construction was seized out of respect for the law, not because there was anything in writing. We did not receive a copy of whatever we were violation of or a copy of a code violation. We didn't receive anything in writing at that time, but we still chose to stop. On the 28th of September, we submitted an addendum for construction changes to the city. On the 28th, we mailed an email from Huidin, and the son of Huidin requested drawings and clarification on the height. On the 30th, we submitted an updated drawing and email back to the city. On October 20th, we was unable to consider the addendum. We were unattending because our cat died, and the son of that was far more important to us to be aware at that time. Mr. Hughes started doing, leaving the member of the team's legal suggestions over the carport construction. They voted to title the addendum approval until the committee members' questions were answered. Mr. Hughes was asked during that time what she wanted to happen. On the 21st, the city council meets and gives us and Mr. Hughes an opportunity to speak. Planning and zoning recommends to the city to title the addendum approval. On the 29th, Huidin set the planning and zoning, emailed us a list of questions, and a list of questions for us to answer. A workshop meeting is scheduled to meet at my house on the 4th of November, at my house. On the 4th, there was a workshop meeting held at our driveway of my property.
And your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you for considering this matter. I appreciate it. I have lots of questions, and if you have any, please be sure to ask me. I have lots of questions, and if you have any, please be sure to ask me.
Okay. That being the last of the public comments, we'll go to the presentations, which are limited to 10 minutes each. First one up is Jefferson Economic Development Corporation, or JCO, Jamie Parsons. Oh, Jamie, before you start, real quick, I'd just like to recognize the fact that we, last week, we had interviewed and hired a new attorney. And for most of you that are looking this way, you don't know it, but he's here. He's in that little box over there. And so George Hyde is attending this meeting as well, so let's all welcome him as our new mayor, I mean, our new lawyer.
I forgot to do that when we started. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Putting the pressure on already, George. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. This is the Jefferson Economic Development Corporation quarterly report for the quarter ending September this year. As you can see from our report, we had elected new officers, as we do every July. And I was elected president again. Sean Fuqua was elected vice president, and Portia Johnson was elected secretary and treasurer. We approved a budget of $386,000 estimated in revenue, $499,500 in expenses, using $113,500 from the prior year reserves to cover the deficit. And we updated our signatories on our JCO bank accounts. So you can see our financial information from our various accounts ending September 30th, at the end of this quarter. Well, we've also committed funds for a new fire station, per request from the City Council, in the amount of $400,000. And left us available JCO fund balances of September 30th of $1,529,045. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tourism, Colleen Taylor is not here tonight. We'll have her here for the December meeting. So next up is Friends of Jefferson Animals, Sharon Goolsbee, but this looks like Dana Carroll.
Substitute tonight. Ms. Goolsbee's out of town, so you get me. I saw that Ms. Furman said, "I'm Dana Carroll. If you know me..." I don't do hugs. And if you don't know me, I'm Dana Carroll. So as you can see, if you flip to the back of your packet, I'm not going to read it line item by line item like Ms. Goolsbee does, because I know you guys probably feel like this is redundant, and it is. But as you can see, for the quarterly period ending in September of 2025, the city allocated $4,089.75. In July, we spent $675 in boarding, $3,735.50 in vetting. Supplies were a little over $1,000, for a total of $5,673.1. In August, $360 in boarding, $1,459.79 in vetting, and supplies, again, a little over $1,000, for a total in August of $2,838.07. When you get going into September, we have vetting, nothing in boarding because it was paid in August. In vetting, we have $2,162.51. Supplies is $1,006.94.53, for a total of $3,857.04. So if you take into consideration July, August, and September, our total expenditures are over $12,368.42, with $4,089.75 coming from the city. What I would also like to mention is, for the month of July, we sent 25 dogs up north. In August, we had one, or sorry, in July, we had one city kitty adopted. In August, we sent 21 dogs, two of which were city dogs. And then nine kittens were sent with the rescue from me personally. All of those were from a city colony around the police station. And then in September, we sent 20 on transport. If you will notice, at a prior meeting, we were asked if we could start allocating city and county. And if you look back, Sharon has started to do that where a receipt is available. If you were in town last weekend, hopefully you saw an uptick in business, and that was because we held our third annual wolf stock. We were able to adopt out several dogs that had been with long-term fosters, and I'm proud to say Clyde Finley, who was the deceased gentleman from over a year ago, we finally got the last of his 32 dogs, a home with a free mason who was downtown selling raffle tickets. So we were really happy for her. We also got the city dog that was underneath the house behind the spinstroms, that his ear had been torn off, and now he only has one ear. We were able to get him adopted. And then two other additional dogs, as well as two applications. This year, we raised a little over $22,000, which surpasses last year's wolf stock total of $19,000. This Candlelot, we will have a home that has graciously opened up to be in addition to Candlelot, and they'll have all proceeds going to benefit Friends of Jefferson for that, those weekends on Saturday. So are there any questions?
I have some. First of all, I do want to say thank you to you and all the other volunteers that made Wolf Stock happen. I know there's lots of untold hours that go into that to really subsidize what food gets from the city and the county. How are we doing with spays and neuters? Because we've talked about before, we can't rescue the way out of it.
Correct. I can tell you, I think I have it on the back of this page here, no, let me read this page. I have one vet, one vet's numbers, and off the top of my head, 32 spay and neuters, or sorry, 32 spays, I think there were 12 neuters, and that was just dogs for this quarter. And then cats, it was roughly 10 to 15, and that's just that one vet, and that vet's in gama. That's the cheaper version, but we do take a lot of the city kitties to vet on fourth, and I don't have their numbers because we didn't get them back in time. But we do that out of convenience, because they're open later, and we can pick up later if we need to.
And what kind of support is the county providing these days? Because it comes up. People want to know.
Well, I've been to a lot of county commissioner meetings, too. So thankfully this year, due to my advocacy and help from other people in the city and county, they have stepped in, and they'll be dedicating quarterly next year to the tune of $10,000 total. And we'll get a check in December with one month sign obtained, but starting next year will be quarterly. They've also decided to create a Dino Fund, the words, not mine, in order to help with rabies control authority, because that is something, again, that the state of Texas mandates. So Chief Perez has been very helpful in giving me the information I need as far as training and whatnot. But we will have to more than likely facilitate a partnership with another entity like Marshall or Longview to hold any dogs that, or other animals that test positive for rabies, because we don't have the capability to do that here.
No, that's a bigger deal. So I've not, I've not gotten to say anything to you from this side of the table, but I just want to say thank you again. I know you get criticized, an armchair quarterback, and most of us haven't walked in your shoes, not in a swampy ditch, or a dogfighter's yard, or down a well. So you're appreciated, and I get to say that from this seat, and that feels pretty good.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that you want to tell us about that you just forgot in your remarks or that we didn't ask you about?
All praise for Wolf Stock truly goes to Ashley May's, her husband Terry, and a community of unspoken people, people that I don't even know their names. And if they're watching at home, and they gave us a donation of any kind, I greatly appreciate that, because without their help, it couldn't happen. And we had a lot of new donors this year with items, which was really exciting, and an uptick in the attendance. So we're looking forward to next year. And yes, it is a six-month or more long process. So if you have ever thought about adopting, we do have some great older dogs and kitties that are looking for homes. Currently, over 50 dogs in our program, and puppies, and over 35 kittens and cats. So. Anybody else? Grownups?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all so much.
And next, we have the city administrator slash city secretary comments.
There's something wrong with my microphone here, so I'm going to try and not let it drop. No, it's okay. Mr. Manis, I just, it's not on the agenda. The mayor had resigned the day the agenda was posted, so we couldn't take any action on that at this agenda. So I wanted to also address the public that the next council meeting in December, the council is going to consider what they want to do going forward with that vacancy. So y'all are aware they will be considering it. We just couldn't do it tonight this early. You're welcome. All right. The accounting software in FundView, tonight, y'all have reports, financial reports to do the May through September. It's actually for the full fiscal year. There is still backlog that needs to be entered in to the system, and we're going to catch those as we go throughout the years. Our auditor is coming December, the first week of December. So they're going to also be auditing us. We're going to be spending that whole week trying to get everything we can entered in into them. It's still not all going to be there. Usually, at the end of the year, we have audit journal entries we have to do anyways because of the type of accounting that we do. And so those will probably be in there, and you'll have a better idea of where the financials stand. But this is everything that has basically gone out and come in, revenue and expenses. So if you have any questions on that, I did ask y'all to let me know ahead of time so I could be prepared, but I will do the best I can if you need to take it out of consent item and put it into action item. The city website, I just wanted everybody to know that we are going to be doing some updates to our current city website, so you're going to see a change in what it looks like. It's going to take a little while to do. There might be some downtime in there where it goes offline, and it says we're temporarily working on it. But we're trying to get it brought up to speed with all the changes that have made with legislation and prior years having to be ADA compliant, so we're trying to get all of that where it needs to be. So there's going to be some changes coming up, and it's going to happen over the next few months. Our office closures, November 26th, we are open half-day that day. And then the 27th and the 28th, we're going to be closed both of those days. Our Christmas decorations and lights, next week, we'll start putting up those pole lights. You're going to see two, nine new pole lights going up this year. I'm going to address the TMO conference here in just a minute, but while I was there, I found a vendor that had those lights on sale, surprisingly, 75% off. So I was able to get nine lights ordered for $2,500, well less than $2,500, which typically, if you order one of those packs, you're looking at $2,000 to $3,000 for three. So you'll see those going up next week. The old Christmas pole lights, some of those are going to go up, but like I announced last time, we're going to keep it to the downtown area, the brick streets, to try and keep it all, you know, in a general location. We would love to expand it out, but they're old, the wiring's not the greatest, and safety comes first. So we tried to fix those ones up the best we could. The park lights are being installed right now. I seen the guys down there earlier today. Again, with those lights, those are old. I would love to buy new, but we just don't have it in the budget this year to buy all new. And we're going to try and have a better process going forward throughout these next few years with the budget and everything. And now the TMO conference, I really encourage the council members to go to that if they can. It was a wonderful experience. I would love for all the department heads to go, too. There was over 3,800 of us there, between council members, city managers, staff, public works, police, fire, all of that. There was over 490 vendors there, and I was able to network with cities and some great people. And to hear, you know, the problems Jefferson has compared to the problems that other cities have, they're in the same boat we are. We believe we are special. We are special. And I will proudly say we're special, and I love Jefferson. A lot of people have never heard of Jefferson, so I really encourage them to come to Jefferson and visit us. Other people have heard all about us and think they know everything about us. So it was a wonderful experience. I went to the legislative update, the leadership classes, grants, food regulations. We're going to see some changes on our food truck vendors. It's going to be a huge change, become, coming into effect June 1st, I believe it is, and we're going to be working with our city attorney on how we can be compliant. The ethics and code of conduct was wonderful, and I think it'd be wonderful for all of us to attend. And other than that, I would just really encourage, thank you for the budget and training and education. I'm glad each year now we have it in there so that y'all can do it also. At least three of you can do it per year when you come on or you renew. And just encourage y'all to take advantage of some of these classes they have online. So that's it for my comments. Do you have any questions?
Who is, who will be updating our website?
We do interface networking, does our website. His name is Quinn Scott, and he doesn't do our emails and things like that. It's through WordPress, so there's definitely some things there that need to be updated. And right now, everybody posts on there, including tourism. So we'll also have access. It's just going to look different and be more clean and crisp.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Next is the consent agenda. City council reserves the right to remove items from the consent agenda and consider and/or approve individually. I'll go down the list and then see if anybody has anything they want to pull out of that. Item A is an item. Consider and/or approve October 22, 2025 special council meeting minutes. B. Boyne, consider and/or approve November 4, 2025 special meeting minutes. C. Charles, consider and/or approve November 12, 2025 special meeting minutes. D. David, consider and/or approve monthly financials. E. Edward, consider and/or approve hiring Lisa Hager, Hager?
Hager.
Hager, to fill the administrative assistant position at the rate of $17 per hour, to be effective November 19, 2025. F. Frank, consider and/or approve the adoption and resolution of the new plan document for the upcoming 2026 plan year for the Jefferson City, for the City of Jefferson, Texas Cafeteria Plan sponsored by Colonial Life. G. George, consider and/or approve Christmas train event application for December 4, 2025. H. Henry, consider and/or approve Shell application for sign permit at 105 South Walcott Street, sign, a price sign, corner of Highway 59 and Highway 49. I. Ida, consider and/or approve Shell application for sign permit, 105 South Walnut Street, canopy sign. And J. John, consider and/or approve Shell application for sign permit, 105 South Walnut, a Walcott Street, I'm sorry, high-rise on Highway 59. Not hearing anybody wanting to pull anything out of there. Do I have, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all Aziz's.
I'll second.
Motion's approved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstaining? Action items. A, discuss, consider, and/or approve Chris Richardson's application for building permit, single-family home, 204 East Clay Street.
I make a motion to approve.
Sir.
I just want to note, I spoke with, I was at the meeting, and at that time, there were some questions they had for Mr. Richardson. He was not at the meeting, but they have since been able to answer those questions, and planning and zoning is all right with us going ahead.
And I also spoke with Mr. Richardson on that, and he answered all the questions that I had satisfied-
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I just wanna note, I spoke with, I was at the meeting, and at that time, there were some questions they had for Mr. Richardson. He was not at the meeting, but they have since been able to answer those questions, and planning and zoning is, is all right with this going ahead.
And I also spoke with Mr. Richardson on that, and he answered all the questions that I had satisfactory.
That's a big house, too. I was looking at it.
So we got a s-
It should fit in nicely.
Oh, yeah. Your, all, all your stuff up there does.
I just wanna say one thing. If anyone wants to know what it'll look like, how it'll fit in, just take a drive around the block and you'll know about it. That whole neighborhood, the best we can pick.
It does, it does.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Discuss, consider, and/or approve Steve and Peggy Walker's amendment to the application for building permit that was previously approved on, on April 15, 2025. Amendment table on October 22, 2025 at 407 East Walker Street. Carport with sit back variance.
We're gonna need some kinds of advice from the lawyer on that, or, or what? You know, we're kinda at a-
I think we do.
I'm sorry?
I think we do.
Do you have questions for him? Cause he's, he's-
Uh, well, it's, uh, has, have you looked over that permit and kinda gone over what, you know, our current ordinances are and stuff like that?
Well, we were discussing that today earlier before the meeting. But the, um, the information I would need to give to the city council would be attorney-client privileged information. And so you would need to put it into executive session under 551071 of the executive session portion of your meeting. You can call that executive session now, or you can wait till then, and then recall this item after we get out of exec, in case there are other exec items you wanna go into.
I'd like to do that second option. I'd like to hold this till executive session in case there are other items we want to talk to you about then.
I have a, I have a question of the builder on the, this is a, a new, a new permit application? Is it not? I don't know.
That, what you have in front of you is what Planning and Zoning-
Right.
-recommended from their meeting last night. And that's a copy of the survey that was provided to Planning and Zoning.
I was at the meeting last night, and we do have members of Planning and Zoning here that might be better positioned to answer that. But this is the survey provided by the neighbor, actually, that shows the survey of the Walker's property. Much of the property line is, is directly on or near that fence, and concerns the requested variance from the neighbor.
But, what I was gonna ask is, does anybody know the distance from the garage to the fence? The existing garage, not the-
From the original structure?
Yeah, the original-
I am not sure that we do have that information. Okay.
Executive session when it's time, unless you all-
So a motion is to take this?
So a motion to table this?
No, it's still open on the table. We can just, we can rearrange without making a motion.
Just postpone.
Postpone to executive.
There's just a motion to postpone.
So I'll make a motion to postpone until after executive session. Second.
Okay, motion to postpone until after executive session, made by April, and seconded by Kimberly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstains? So we'll, we'll take that up after we do an executive session after a while. Number C. Charles, discuss, consider, and approve the Immaculate Conception Catholic Church application for building permit at 206 West Henderson Street. A garage slash cover walkway attached to the house being renovated.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Kimberly, second by Bubba. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, D. David, discuss, consider, and/or approve official action approving ordinance number 25, uh, 2025-11-1, an ordinance by the city as a regulatory authority that has retained original jurisdiction to review and act on Swep Hill's request, requested change in base rates.
Okay, now, this was originally denied, wasn't it? Isn't that, what's in this?
Yeah, the ordinance we had in our original packet was for denial, and then we have a new one tonight about suspending rate change for 90 days.
Yes, and this was the second ordinance that's here, the, after our attorney reviewed it, has additional recommendations for you all on that. Would you mind explaining that to them on that ordinance that y'all sent over?
I'd be happy to. So, from my experience working with cities for the last 27 years, when a utility provider sets an application to the Public Utility Commission to increase their rates, it uses a, an enormous amount of documentation and paperwork to talk about its half a million customers in this case, and all of the infrastructure that it has, and so forth. It's very complicated and complex. And so I have seen city councils traditionally suspend the implementation of the proposed rate change for 90 days, which is allowed by law. And during that time period, if they are not already a member of a coalition of cities, that they pursue that, that application, and then once they are in that coalition of cities, they would reconsider this to deny it. What that does then is it allows one rate case attorney, a utility attorney's office to handle the utility rate dispute, evaluate, go through all the materials, evaluate whether or not they really do need this low 13.48% of a raise in order to meet their needs. And typically, I believe that utilities are anticipatorily setting that rate. And so, because they know that there's going to be cities that are gonna challenge it, and that challenge will likely end up reducing that amount. And so while the, the rate case is paid for by the utility, so the utility pays for your attorney, that is translates into the rates that they ultimately have. And so because you're a small city, the amount of money that, for you to fight this by yourself would be significant. But if you join a cooperative of cities that are, are together fighting it, then the cost becomes negligible. So, you know, my recommendation is, is that you get the, all the language in the proposed ordinance that I provided, you know, to maximize the efficient use of resources and expertise in reviewing, analyzing, and investigating Swep Hill's rate request and its changes in tariffs. It's prudent to coordinate the city's efforts with a coalition of similarly situated municipalities, that the city council desires to suspend the implementation of the proposed rate change for 90 days, that the rate consists of voluminous amount of information, including Swep Hill's rate filing package, prefiled direct testimony, exhibit schedules, and work papers, and that the application fails to establish that its overall revenue request resulted in no more than an amount that will permit Swep Hill a reasonable opportunity to earn a reasonable return on the utility's investment capital. And so because it fails to establish proposed rates are just and reasonable, you would like the coalition to have this 90 days, to join a coalition, and then, once you've joined a coalition, we would bring back an ordinance denying the rate increase and identifying that coalition of which we're going to participate in to, to challenge the documents to see whether or not they can really prove out that 13.48% change.
So your recommendation for tonight would be what?
That is to pass the ordinance that I provided to the city administrator, just, uh, 548 ZD, which suspends the rate change for 90 days, which means nothing happened, you pay the same rate. And then within that 90-day period, you have to decide to either accept the new rate or deny that rate and join the coalition. My expectation would be that you would want to join the coalition to try to get the lowest rate change available based on the fact of the application to increase it by 13.48%.
So basically, we would buy time to join with all the other little dogs, to get one big dog to at least reduce this rate, but likely might be, would be the outcome, maybe.
Well, and I spoke to the Texarkana city manager before this meeting about this very issue. They've already denied it because they were already in a coalition. So if I wasn't sure whether you were in a coalition or not, the suspension provides us that opportunity to confirm that you are a coalition or get into a coalition so then we can then deny it and join even some pretty big dogs in the area to fight this. And Texarkana has already denied it and has turned it over to the, I think it's called the Texas Coalition, uh, it's CARP, C-A-R-P.
Okay.
And it's a nonprofit that advocates municipalities for purposes of fighting rate cases like this.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt this, this proposed ordinance from our attorney to suspend the implementation of the proposed rate change for 90 days.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. E. Edward, discuss, consider, and approve adoption of a resolution authorizing an application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Bubba, second by Kimberly. Any discussion?
I was just gonna ask, is Hollis's on this? Is in or mayor? Is he, or would it need to be put as mayor pro tem? Which basically means the same thing.
Yeah, we can put pro tem. We can cross it out and put-
Well, it doesn't matter. I just wanna make sure that we weren't putting something on there that had to be changed later.
Yeah, well, we kinda like-
Put it in, put it in a typewriter and just type P-R-O-T-E-M after the board mayor. Oh, wait, nobody has typewriters anymore, never mind.
I actually do. I have a typewriter. Cause I'm weird.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any, well, that's all the discussion. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. F. Frank, discuss, consider, and approve naming the park on Haywood Street, Dr. R.D. Douglas Park.
So, I wanna make an amendment to this just based upon some feedback from the community. I would like to make an amendment to name it, um, Dr. R.D. Douglas Family Park. That way, his wife is included. When we say the word family, we can include her as well. So that's the amendment I would like to make to this motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
The only thing I wanted to add is that I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community, and I've actually talked to folks at the community center. I don't oppose naming this park whatever the people would like, but there are other suggestions on the table from people in that ward and people that are on the board at the community center. And I'm wondering if it would be something that we could do to, to, to move it to the December meeting, just so they feel like they, a lot of people are feeling like they were kinda surprised by this. I had posted that it was on the agenda, and that was the first a lot of people had heard about it. They're feeling a little left out.
There are, there are also a lot of people that didn't even know who he was. So I feel like, I mean, I could say, I want this park named after me as well. Just, you know, just joking. But there are so many people that would like this park named something else. I feel like this is the only name that we could name this park. And, I mean, this is the founder of that community center. This is the founder of so much. I mean, there are so many other people who are worthy to have parks named after them. I mean, one day when I'm gone from this world, all of my work in the community, Ms. Mary, Dana, all of us should have parks named after us. But I feel like there is no other name that we should go with than to name the park after the founder.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. All I'm getting to is that a lot of people in my ward felt blindsided by this, and I wonder if allowing a period of public comment between now and our next meeting would go some toward us waging that feeling? I know that this topic came up, I think, I was told it was late last year, early this year, when the community center board said that park needed to be named, but no specific suggestions was made. And they've, and I know that, you know, people, there were some funny comments online. My post was some kind of facetious suggestions, you know, name it after me, the greatest basketball player that ever lived, you know, people being funny. But there were some other suggestions, like our first Ag Life agent, or different people like that that were African-American people that were really important in the community. So I'm not arguing with the choice. I'm just saying that there are so many things that because they move quickly or things are going on, that people feel left out. And this is just an opportunity to help people not be left out. I'm not sure that we can take comments.
Well, you know, I think about, you know, and it doesn't matter to me, we could go on that. I knew Dr. Douglas a little, I knew his wife a little. But, you know, Eugene Robinson was basically the reason why we've got the form of government we've got now. Ms. Ida, she was working for the extension agent when Daco came in. You got Professor Pitts, that was, was basically Central High School for 49 years. There's nothing named for him over there, so. But it, it's good with me, whatever you want to use.
George, guess why I say, like, there are so many prominent people that should have parks, or, you know, that could have the park named after them. I feel like there are no toes that we could step on if we named it after the person who, who founded it. Yes, people will have other suggestions. I know they will. I mean, there are probably people that think the park should be named after Ms. Walker. You know, there are so many prominent people, but I, I feel like that this is the person that founded that community center. Um, but I'm, I'm okay with it if we, I'm, I'm fine with doing, if you wanna table it, I mean, I'm okay with it.
I just want people to feel like they were heard. George, can, there's someone in the, in the gathering that wants to address us. Can we, can we ask her a question?
Um, that would be up to the presiding officer as to whether they want to provide additional test, uh, it's called, uh, public testimony.
Can we hear from Ms. Mary?
We could, we could hear from, from anybody else. And my, my thinking is that, yes, there's, there's a lot of others that have committed, have given a lot to the city.
Yes.
And there's a lot of, of, you know, names that, that do need to have parks, or streets, or buildings, or something named after them.
All right, I wanna hear what you have to say, Ms. Mary.
Okay. Yeah, there are a lot of prominent people in town, but Dr. Douglas donated the land where the park is. And-
And built that building, am I correct?
I'm not sure about the building, but I read that he donated the property. And if he donated that property, I feel like the park should be named after him. And if he donated that property, I feel like the park should be named after him.
And, and his wife's name was May, Willie May?
His wife, yes.
Okay, so your suggested name would be, um, the R.D. Douglas and Willie May, Willie May and R.D. Douglas Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Francina, sorry, you, uh, motion?
We do have two board members.
I'm on the board of the Nellan County Community Center, and I do not know of any representative on the board that would not be in favor of naming the park after Dr. Douglas. Thank you, April.
Are there any other members of that board that want to address us, if that's all right with our mayor, Porta? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to name it the, uh, Dr. R.D. Douglas and family.
Well, Ms. Mary gave another suggestion of, I didn't know his wife, I just have heard his name. So what did you say his wife's name was?
Willie May.
Willie May. Okay, so let me, um, let me retract my second, or my first retraction. So, I would make a motion to name the Haywood Community Center Park, give it an official name of Dr. R.D. and Willie May Douglas Park.
I'll second that.
And Camberly seconds it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just a name.
Motion carries. Okay, G. and George, discuss, consider, and approve renaming what is now known as Lions Park to Alley's Grand Square. And I would make a motion to, uh, name it Alley's Grand Square. No second?
No second.
Then the, uh, the motion dies.
So, I guess since the motion died, I would like to make a motion to leave the park as the Lions Club Park.
You can make a, you can make a motion to deny-
To deny the original name?
If, if you would like.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to make the motion to deny naming Lions Club Park Alley Green Square.
Is that required when the first motion failed?
No, they, if they, the, um, that's, that, if a, a motion fails, the, the table is empty, and so, um, basically, no action has ta, has been taken at all.
Okay.
And so, if you want to make another motion, you can, um, but, uh, and typically, when I see motions that are kind of in the negative, I want you to vote to deny, sort of, a yes means no, um, is, is to bring finality to a, to, to the issue. Um, and so, the, uh, cause otherwise, it can, it can just die on the table with no action, uh, but, uh, unless you have protocols, which I know we're working on, um, anybody else could bring it back up at the next meeting if that was what the city council desired to do.
So, April, I don't think, I think with the, the, um, the motion not being seconded, then it is automatic with Lions Park?
It is. That it's not its official name?
It's not the official name, so that's why I made the-
But you've not, you've not taken any action to change anything yet.
Right.
Because you, you've not had any motion voted on by a majority of the, of the city council to do, to take action. So, it's, it's whatever it was before this meeting started right now.
Right, so I said, okay.
Still kinda officially not named?
Correct.
This, yeah, it's still kinda officially not named, so-
Sammy?
Will you come up to the microphone, please?
What your attorney, our attorney just said was, basically, is that, so you took no action, so it died, right? But, somebody could bring it back up next month, okay? Basically, what he said, somebody needs to second her motion, and you vote and do away with it, and forget it, guys. Can you do that?
What?
You can't, did you not hear what he said?
I heard what he said, but I don't understand what you said.
I just, cause I'm a little upset, cause nobody acted. My, my councilman didn't second, okay? So let me settle down and just state it out. She made a motion to keep it like it is. So, that would stop all of going forward, somebody bringing it up next month and trying to put it on the agenda.
Oh no, oh no, just because you make a motion today and vote on something, doesn't mean that two months from now, you can't bring it all back up and do it again. That's not a-
Well, the, the motions would be that you would grant continuing with Lions Club Park. Do y'all not agree?
I think the, uh, our attorney's trying to say something there.
I was just gonna say, what, the, the, the comment by council was, uh, the, the council member was correct, is that until you have rules that say, once you've decided on something, you can't bring it up, say for six months, or what, that, or you have to be someone who voted no on something to bring it back, to vote yes, then it, there are no rules. And so, um, if a city council member wanted to put the same thing on the agenda every meeting, despite the fact that it fails every meeting, um, they can do that right now. And so, um, but what I was, what I was getting to was that, for purposes of the public, if you're going to leave the, the name as it is, then, um, you can either vote to reaffirm the name that's there, uh, and that would be a motion to reaffirm the existing name, or you can vote to, uh, deny all alternatives and just maintain the status quo.
So I guess my motion is count-
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's already here, it's already on the table.
Okay, what is the motion, I'm sorry?
The motion was to not, to deny naming it, um-
Alley's Grand Square.
Alley's Grand Square, and to leave it Lions Club Park.
Well, my only question is, is I'm not sure that it legally has that name. I mean, that's what we call it, there's a sign there, but we've heard from our historian that it doesn't have an official name, that's my only hangup.
So now-
And our historian is waving at us frantically.
I don't, it won't, it won't, I don't think you can use the word leave as, based on Mr. Kelsey's, his testimony, what you can do is make a motion to name it Lion Park.
Well, I just said that because in our, um, Action Anatomy has as Lions Clubs, as Lions Park.
Yeah, that's right.
So your, your agenda is required, is, is controlled under the Texas Open Meeting Act, and the Texas Open, Open Meeting Act only requires that you provide a sufficient description of the subject matter of what you're going to speak to. It doesn't limit or, um, modify your authority as the city council to take action. So, um, as long as it's, um, clear enough so that the public knows what you're gonna talk about, because if they want to come watch, they can, um, that's all that that, the agenda itself, that's the only authority, I guess, that the agenda has, requirement. So just because it has something on the agenda doesn't, uh, control your, your activities. You just gotta stay on the, stay on topic.
Did we do all of our voting? Did we do all of our voting?
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion to-
Okay.
What is the motion, I'm sorry? We keep talking and then I forget. I'll do the cracker.
So, I made a motion to deny naming the Lions Club Park, to rename it Alley's Grand Square, and to leave it-
Okay.
What it is for right now. Lions Park. And then I have to say-
Leave it as, uh, Lions Club Park at least for now.
For now.
Yeah, for what it's called.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we could, yeah, I mean, in a general law city, you can almost bring it back up at will, you know, or whatever, I think.
So you're, are you seconding?
I did second.
He said he's second. So we're waiting on everybody else.
And I had a cracker.
Motion by April, second by Bubba? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have a question from our attorney. Or our attorney, I share him with y'all, I'm just so happy that we have somebody. So, now, can I officially, under the same umbrella, make a motion to rename the park officially Lions Club Park?
It's within the subject matter, so you can have more than one action on an agenda item.
So, I would like to-
Otherwise, if it, no, go ahead.
Sorry, I would like to officially name, rename the park Lions Club Park, and then we'll have it on record, for sure.
I can, can we repeat?
Cause some people are saying it's not officially that, we have a sign there, so by us doing this, it will officially, on record, name it Lions Club Park, by the motion that I just made.
Okay, second.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion?
You can't win.
I want to, uh, I wanna say, uh, the, the Lions Club, I appreciate what they do at the, at the park. Uh, the name of the park would not change anything as far as their, uh, ability to, uh, carry on these, uh, these programs. They always file a, uh, uh, request for, uh, the, the activities to happen and everything. Um, my big thing there is, uh, as far as, is, uh, having it named after, uh, you know, for the, the Lions Club. Uh, Lions Club, uh, I know in recent years, uh, they haven't, uh, other than killing the, uh, the, the fire ants last year, which were great, uh, they, they don't have the money to, to put into it. Uh, the city, uh, pays for all the, uh, the playground equipment and, uh, getting it mowed and all the upkeep and everything. And, uh, there are other clubs in town that, that probably would like to have a, a park named, you know, after them too, such as a Rotary Club or, or whoever, and, uh, so I'm-
Mayor Porta, is my interpretation correct, that you're recognizing all the things that we have done as the Lions Club to that park, but your question is, what have we done lately? Because that's what it sounds like to me. And I'm taking underage with that, sir, taking great underage with it. The Lions Club has been here since nineteen forty-seven, we took care of that park fifty years ago, we have been bringing the circus to town for well over twenty-five years, we've been putting up Christmas trees in the park for well over thirty-five years, and we're still participating in that park up there. Maybe not to the level that you're thinking we ought to be at, but we're still doing it, sir. May I answer any of your questions?
I really don't have any questions, I was referring to the, uh, the monetary things that, that the city, last year, we, we paid, uh, what was it, five thousand something for the, uh, playground equipment up there?
Um, that was like thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand.
Uh, and, without, I mean-
Hollis, excuse me, is I, is you got some personal?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm Mayor Porta. I'm sorry, but when, when people, I, I, I think people in the audience are speaking, I can't understand what they're saying, and, um, also, if you were, just for the record, um, if this gentleman could just say his name and address, so that we have that, so that anybody that's speaking is, is recognized, um, I would appreciate that, but, that, you know, everyone in public comment comes in and says what their name is and where they live, and that, that's so that we identify the, the person who's making the comments.
Okay, I'm Skip Tarnes, I live at three oh five South Alley, here in Jefferson.
Thank you, sir, it's just a process, it, it has nothing to do with you individually. And whoever's in the back talking, if they'd like to talk and you want to recognize them, they have them come to the podium, please, if I can hear them.
Hey Sammy, did you wanna come up? Okay.
Uh, actually, my, my intent with this was, uh, just to, uh, follow in keeping with our, our efforts to, uh, stick with the, uh, history of, of Jefferson from the-
Well, you realize there is an alley street in Jefferson, isn't that sufficient? We already have a Martin Luther King Street, it's good enough for him, wouldn't it be good enough for the alleys? Who is more deserving of having two things named after them than just one? Illustrate to me why I'm off base here with you. Your silence is deadening.
I don't, I don't think you're, you're off base, no, sir.
Good, thank you.
I just think we don't, uh, we don't agree on, on, uh, the concept, but, uh-
I've given you my reasons, but I haven't heard yours.
Uh, well, like I said, you know, the, uh, the, the lads of them-
Uh, it's really not appropriate to have a debate during the meeting with a member of the public on the item, this is a board meeting, it's supposed to be the operation of the city, and so, I, if he's made his comments, I think that that's appropriate, but if you're going to have a, a back and forth discussion, it's really taking away from the business of the city at the meeting.
Even if I've done the record, I'm-
We already had a vote on it. Yeah, we hit, we've already had a vote, that we're not going to pass that, and I think, uh, what is, he's saying is inappropriate, is the discussions of his motives as to why he put it on there. And I agree with-
Well, it's just a back and forth.
Yeah, I think we're done here on this subject.
We have a motion and a second. And what is the, we have a motion on the table. We had a second, and a second.
It's been so long.
Okay, and the motion that's on the table is?
To rename the park Lions Park.
Lions Club Park, I believe.
Lions Club Park.
Okay, uh, and that was by April, and the second was?
Bubba.
Bubba?
Bubba.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess I'm alone.
Last vote, thank you.
Okay, H. Henry, discuss, consider, and approve quote for stump removal for Oakwood Memorial Cemetery.
Is there anybody, Melissa, that can address this?
Um, I, I can, uh, briefly address this.
The two bids we have don't look like they're talking about the same thing.
Um, Alan discussed this with the two entities, and, uh, this was the response after the conversations of what they would do.
Because one looks like they're doing a lot more removing of things around that fence line, um, you know, they fill in, level all the holes to gray level, haul stuff off. Um, the other one says it's leveling it out on two sides, um-
So if you would like more information, let me know what it is, I'll send that back to Alan to reach out to those companies.
Well, I think, I need to, I think we need to figure out, there's such a huge difference in price, are they both talking about the same work?
Yeah.
It's all about two sides, and there's more than two sides, there's really only two, well, there's, there's three sides to it, but really, there's only two sides that actually have most of the growth and stuff on them, I think, for, you know, one, what was that, Cash Street behind?
All right, but see, that's what we don't know, is he talking about two sides of the fence, or two sides of the cemetery?
Give some more things.
All right, so your motion is to table for more information. I'll second that motion.
Okay, before you vote, let me know, you wanna know how many, what size it's on?
We need to know, we need, we just need to know that they're bidding on the same thing.
And have they both, my question is, I just- My question is, I just want to make, because the price is so different. If the cheaper price has actually been out there to see, does he actually know? And, because I, that's what I was wondering. I'm like, that is just such a huge price difference.
Is the first bid, are they also going to fill in, level all the holes to grade? Are they going to haul off the remaining grindings? We need, we need to compare apples and apples, not apples and pineapples.
Okay.
And that, this one has actually been meaning to come before council only because we put the fence around the cemetery. And we were asked to find out about stump grinding, so, um-
It's, it's needed. I just-
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Clarification.
Because that's a big gap.
It's surprising to me that wasn't done.
Yeah.
I always thought they used bulldozer to get all that stuff out of the way before they put the fence, but-
Okay, so your, your motion is to, to table pending-
For more information.
And I seconded.
For more information. And Kimberly seconds that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion case. Okay, moving to discussion items. Discuss extending agreement and mutual use agreement between the City of Jefferson and DBR Entertainment Incorporated, history Jefferson Railway, 400 East Austin Street.
So, do you want me to do a presentation on this? Or are there any questions regarding discussion on this item?
Uh, if, if you'd like to come up and then explain to us what, uh-
If you'll turn to your handout in the packet and turn to page four. Don and I own 97 acres that is known as the Diamond Donna Root Park. The 97 acres is owned by Diamond Don's Motorsport, Motorsports, Inc. We also own the Depot Building at 400 East Austin. And that is in the name of DBR Entertainment, Inc. Between the Depot and the 97 Acres are lot and blocks that are in the Oakwood Edition and in the Perry Edition. The, all of these lots are unknown owners, some known owners, some owned by DBR Entertainment, some owned by the City of Jefferson. When Don and I bought the property 22 years ago, the city gave us an easement to use all of the property from the Depot out to the RV Park for purposes of events, vehicular, equestrian. Um, there's a level road that Don built that runs along the left side of this boundary that you see says up 49. This level road is a private road that goes from the RV Park down to the gate. So at the Depot, there's a red gate. That's a private entrance. The city has a key, we have a key, and Shweppco has a key. And anyone who has ownership of any lots within this, uh, this area can get a key if they want a key. It's basically undeveloped wetlands. It's all taxed as timberland. And so what we're asking for, oh, and also, along this left boundary line, the city has a lift station. It's the pump station that pumps all of the excess water out into the big canal that runs down to Big Satisfying. So when it really, really rains, the city employees come in through the red gate and they go to the lift station to manually turn on that lift to start pumping all the water out. Don and I own lots between the Depot and the lift station. And so those two agreements that we're asking for, we call them reciprocal agreements. One gives the City of Jefferson unfettered access to the lift station across all property. The other agreement gives us the right to use any city property and alleys and easements located within these lots and blocks. So the rule of reciprocal, the city has to have an easement from us to go across all property to lift station. And we would like to have the easement for using this property to give access to the RV Park. We hold a lot of events at the RV Park and it's for sale now. And the right of the RV Park to use this property and the level road benefits all of the businesses in Jefferson because it's a private roadway that everybody can come down to Jefferson without getting on Highway 409. The, uh, this year, we had three major events at the RV Park that used this lot, 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 lot property. We already have three events scheduled in 2026 for if we still own the property then or if we have sold it. So we have a big Texas Cross Country Racing Association that brought 600 people to Jefferson this year. Don has been awarded a national motocross event, which brought over 1,000 people. When we've had the event before, that's in 2026. And we're also doing Diamond in the Rock again, which will probably bring in 400 or 500 people. So in order for us to sell the Depot, which is a building that is on city lots, and for us to continue the activities that were done at the RV Park, we're asking to extend the two agreements that are now in place and to add just a couple of little provisions that I put in your presentation. The next step, uh, this is discussion. We wanted to, as Melissa says, we want to get city council to buy, on where you guys are, and approve of these agreements. And then our next step, I would recommend, if you approve us moving forward with the agreements, I would have my attorney draft the extension documents and then send it over to your attorney for a review and comment. So I don't think there's anything to vote on, but it is definitely in discussion because we need to know where the city is on this before we can sign any city agreements on the Depot or the RV Park.
Right, see, now see on the, if I'm not mistaken, on the original-
I can't, I'm sorry.
On the original one, it looked like it was a 12-year agreement.
Right, right. So there was an agreement that was, uh, original agreement 20 years ago. These agreements came about because the city had to get access to the lift station, which when we went through this 20, 22 years ago, we didn't know that. So 12, those documents that were, for 12 years, that's when we agreed to do the use agreement for us and mutual agreement for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because the original was 12 years from the date of execution, or as long as the grantee uses the property for the purposes stated in it. And this would change it to 20 years with automatic extensions for additional five-year terms?
Yes.
I also noticed in the purpose of the easement, that the current terms talked about the operation of the railroad on those existing tracks. And then the operation of the Depot and a restaurant, the new, the proposed easement includes the operation of the Depot building for commercial, residential, retail, restaurant or similar use, building a marina, RV Park and other improvements?
Yes. At this time, we don't know, we've had a lot of buyers interested in the Depot restaurant, maybe making it a residence. You know, at this time, because we don't have a contract, we really don't know what they want to use it for.
So you wanted to have your terms broad enough that it allowed for various usage?
I've got a couple of questions or comments as well, Mayor for Tim, when, when I, y'all are ready. I don't want to stop anyone from asking additional questions, but I just wanted to let you know I have some.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing. George, she's hard of hearing. She can't hear well. Can you stay in?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak up as well if it helps. My name is George Hod. I'm the city attorney. I was informing the Mayor for Tim that I have a few questions for you, but I didn't want to stop the city council from finishing their questions first.
I don't have any-
How long are you waiting for this, this agreement to be full?
Twenty, uh, we want 20 years of agreement. Uh, well, the lift station mutual use agreement will be perpetual as long as the city needs access to the lift station. The use agreement, we're asking for 20 years plus five-year renewals.
Okay, well, the only, the only thing I'll say is, you know, uh, I don't have, you know, I'll be dead and gone probably next week.
Stop. Don't say that.
Three years, I ain't gonna be around, but the, you know, we've kind of got ourselves in a spot with the wildlife deal with Collins Institute. You know, it's almost a perpetual deal on that thing. And it almost leaves no escape clause for the city. Not that there won't be anything, you know, there'll be any kind of problem there, but, you know, I don't know. I'm just, you know, on initial agreement, I always think, well, it ought to come to an end. You know, then we look at everything. Somebody lasts 20 years, shouldn't give you enough time whenever somebody's gonna buy it, that, you know.
Well, and the reason-
You know, they're not gonna be around 20 years either, so.
Well, and that's what I said when we bought it 22 years ago, and that's why I did a 20-year agreement. I said, well, certainly 20 years from now, I'm gonna be retired. And I don't care what happens. Well, that's not the case. You know, it's 22 years now, we're still here. Um, the one thing I will say is the property that's behind the Depot, this lot and block between the Depot and the RV Park, is all wetlands. Every bit of it floods. Um, we've had approval from ARB to classify it as wetlands. We got a dramatic discount on our taxes because it's wetlands. The Corps of Engineers will never allow anybody to go in there and develop any of that property. Don and I own all of the, all of the lots between the Depot and the RV Park along the river. So we have no intention of doing any development, and you really can't anyway because it's all lot and block with city streets and alleys and all of that. It's very complicated.
I have no further questions?
Okay, let's, uh, let our, our city attorney ask his questions. If you want to move over there closer to where you can hear him better.
Well, we could, we could take it off. I'm Melissa with the attorney, if you want to.
Well, I want, I want the council to hear your questions.
All right. For, for purposes here, I just wanted, I mean, do you, do you agree that, that the current easement that filed 837 document, that was, I guess, it was filed in the deed records, was, is expired now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you also, because I want to make sure I understand, because I'm the newest person in, you know, in this decision. So, um, the mutual use agreement is an agreement and it's not an easement. Is that right? Right. And then at the bottom of the first page, number one, it says, DBR here in grants to the city a permanent easement over and across this property for the purpose of ingress and egress to the lift station. And so this agreement, at least for, for purposes of that part, is, is giving the city a permanent easement? Not one that, that expires like this other one did?
Right, exactly. And the question on the extension, I want to make, bring up perpetual, that long, once the Jefferson city needs that for two years.
Right, but I, well, I guess what I'm saying is that the consideration for this agreement that expired on March 2010 was a permanent easement already. So there, there isn't, now, and now this easement doesn't appear to have been filed in the deed records or even prepared. So we need to fix that, that, that the consideration, so there's a separate easement that's filed?
The mutual use agreement is filed.
Okay, so it was, all right. But there, but there's no meets and bounds or other, then?
No, it's just that now it's attached to the exhibit.
Is that attached to the agreement?
Yeah.
Or just the easement?
The mutual use agreement has, uh, a document attached to it.
Right, I see that.
And also the easement has the same exhibit.
Right, okay. So, so when you're looking at that exhibit, there's a kind of a dark, I'll call it a circle, even though it's not circular. It's just kind of a, um, looks like an amoeba, maybe. Yeah, is, is that circle, is that the trail that we're talking about?
That's the whole, uh-
Okay, great. It's just, that's not really defined in here. It's just kind of-
Just defined between the levee and the, it's defined as between the levee and the river, the water and the street, and how they define the progress, like, you know, the water and the street.
Right, right. That, yeah, that's the, the, the whole 97.19 acre track. Okay, so, uh, council, there's, there's a, there's a number of different ways that we can achieve this result. And I would not necessarily want to continue to extend the existing documents. I think that there's a much easier legal method by which to do so. You can have things that are like reciprocal easements. You can do encroachment agreements with the city. There's, there's lots of different other vehicles that may not necessarily, um, have some of the ambiguity in this, in this record. And so what, what I'd ask the city council to do is to table this for the next meeting. And then you can give me the name of your attorney. I can work with, with your attorney to come up with a, a form, an instrument that we both think is the best instrument for this purpose. And then I can, then you can bring it back to the city council for them to consider.
Thank you, George.
Is that satisfactory to the council?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. And this, uh, this was a discussion item. It was not an action item, so we don't have to table it. We can just, uh, let her do as you-
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Okay, uh, council initiatives update. Firehouse and city hall structure, Alderman Haggard.
I will have anything.
Nothing from there. Uh, stop signs, street signs, plus city street painting update, Alderman-
Um, I don't have anything. I know we have gotten some new stop signs and stuff in. But what I will say, if there are any citizens you notice that you need new stop signs on the street, new street signs, please contact me. Um, you can contact me. My phone number is on our website, Facebook, you see me in bookshelves, wherever, just contact me. It's fine.
Okay, employee handbook review, that's Alderman Keith, and he is, uh, he's not here today. Uh, street campaigns, Alderman Parsons.
Nothing to report.
Drainage items, Alderman-
Um, it's gonna rain tomorrow, so we'll probably have some drainage issue. So that's all I have, those are all updates.
Okay, cemetery needs, Alderman Thompson and April.
We're working on, on stump removal.
Yes.
Okay. Building inspector and ordinances, Alderman Parsons.
Um, there was a public hearing on the 13th. I understand there were about 25 citizens in attendance. I had to miss that as people in this community, and my kids are very involved in children's theater. Um, we're coming to an end of that, and I'll be able to attend more things in person. Um, planning and zoning is revising their documents, again, based on community feedback. Um, that means that it may be later than what they had hoped to get it to us. Also because they, of course, want to have our city attorney review that document. Um, but I personally am, I'm happy that they're taking their time to make sure that it is done well. Um, and there's no, there's no benefit to rushing that. Uh, they're really taking a lot of time and giving a lot of attention to detail. I want to remind everyone that we do have a draft of that that was given to us in our October 22 packets, to read that carefully. Um, citizens can review those documents available- Um, citizens can review those documents available online, you can contact Planning and Zoning, your Alderman, and with any questions or comments. Uh, Planning and Zoning does meet twice a month, and the next meeting is December?
Fourth.
December 4th. Uh, those meetings are public meetings, I encourage people to attend, if you can't attend in person, to, um, attend online. I'm seeing conflicting, I have planning, is it the 2nd or the 4th? It's the 2nd, okay, so December the 2nd. So, um, that, those are things that are gonna affect our city, um, long after all of us are, are no longer here, so encourage people to pay attention, get involved. That's all I had to say.
Okay, uh, city limits and floodplain surveys as planning and zoning. No updates there. Uh, mass communication in town sirens, that would be me and, uh, Alderman, uh, April Taylor-Johnson. I have nothing on my end.
I don't have anything except for, um, I know that the police department sends out that, they'll send out the mass alerts, but if you haven't signed up, um, for the communication, you can look on their website, because the chief posts it every so often for the citizens so they can sign up, so the alerts will come to your phone. So if y'all haven't signed up for that, please sign up for it.
Okay, city signage in streets, sidewalks, and city rataways, private property, and that would be me. Uh, I have nothing new there, I know that, uh, we, we, I've turned in a, a list of the, uh, signs that are faded out and unreadable, I'm not sure where the, uh, street department is on that, I'm sure they're, they're still working kind of shorthanded and busy.
Well, in last year's budget, the funding, even though we had those lists, went towards the stop signs, and it was expended on stop signs. So we still have that list on street signs, um, and now that, as funds come available, we'll be able to pick back up on stop signs and street signs.
All right, very good.
Um, can I go back to mass communications, because I, I did a lot of talking, but I didn't exactly say the name. Um, the name of the app you can sign up for, it is called Smart 911, and you can sign up at www dot smart911 dot com, and you can, uh, download it on your smartphone, so I just wanted to make sure that I gave that name.
Okay, uh, welcome to Jefferson signs on Highway 59, current condition, potential plans, funding, volunteer groups, ongoing maintenance, et cetera, and that is, uh, Alderman Thompson and Alderman Taylor-Johnson.
Uh, no change since our last meeting, get a little closer, but nothing to announce here.
Okay, uh, that brings us to the executive session, which will now go into, uh, executive session under section 551 point 071, consultation with attorney.
If you wrote the subject matter.
Perme.
The subject matter must be stated.
Subject, the item on the agenda.
Item 8B, application item, item 8B.
It's 8A, isn't it?
8B.
8B.
8B, will you read it out so that the public knows what we're discussing?
Uh, 8A was, was put on hold for executive session.
8A was approved, that's, uh, Chris Richardson's application, it was item B, uh, the Stephen Peggy Walker.
Oh, B, okay.
Yeah.
So item 8B, discussed, considered, and approved, Steve and Peggy Walker's amendment to the application for building permit that was previously approved on April 15, 2025. Amendment tabled on October 22, 2025, 407 East Walker Street, carport was setback variance.
And the time?
And the time is 7:26.
Okay.
So what do we do, do we turn that off in here?
Well, I'll grab the laptop over here. I'm gonna carry it.
But do you turn off the other monitor in here? No, no, I've, I've got hours, I was, I was steak eating crackers while I was. And then you ate more, and then you ate more.
Well, I, I can't, I can't, I can't be on stop eating since you got it. I haven't had any supper, I haven't eaten anything since lift party day.
Sounds like a problem. Double burger day.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put it, carry him in with me.
Hey. We gotta go in there and talk about it with the lawyer, then you gotta come out here and say, hold on.
Yes.
Any other?
Everybody's good, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Okay, we're back in session.
Can you move me just a little bit, let me, hot light, just there.
This is the light side.
Now I can see everybody.
And so you'll call out that action item again.
Okay, uh, an action item, uh, was on 8B, boy, discussed, considered, and approved, Steve and Peggy Walker's amendment to the application for building permit that was previously approved on April 15, 2025. Amendment tabled on October 22, 2025, 407 East Walker Street, carport was setback variance.
Okay, um, I make a motion to postpone item 8C to be reconsidered after the city staff and applicants meet to address concerns with this application.
That's 8B.
8B, excuse me.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Parsons. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, uh.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, motion second to adjourn.
8:05.
And we are adjourned at 8:05 P.M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, George.